Like to welcome the Brookings County Commission meeting is Tuesday, August 19th, 2025. We'll start the meeting by standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Whoa, wait a minute.
Item number three on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Do I have motion approved?
Don't move.
Second. I have a motion of second. Any additions or corrections?
Yes, I need to add another item to our executive session at the end. SDCL 12523, consulting with legal counsel.
Okay. Any other comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carried. Item number four is an invitation for a citizen to schedule time on the commission agenda for an item not listed. There's a five-minute time limit per person. Anyone wanting to speak during this agenda item must sign in prior to the start of the meeting. No commission action will be taken during this agenda item. Any requested action item may be scheduled for a future meeting date. I believe we have a couple this morning. First would be Rick Weibel.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Rick Weibel, representing myself from Elkton, South Dakota. I have given you a sheet of paper that's in front of you, and in there is late-breaking news of yesterday of Trump's true social post that he put out there, but also the off to the right. I also have provided information regarding kind of the latest, greatest population report of our precinct sizes in the county. And so I'd like to work with the county to try and maybe think of creative ways to split precinct five and six so that we were getting that down closer to the 2,000 benchmark. And that also, during the next meeting, I'll bring you a population report of how that impacts the two parties and their representation. And so when we are electing precinct individuals from each of these districts, we kind of have a wide separation as to how many people each of the precinct folks on the ballot have to go in and basically recruit votes for. So when we look at, for example, precinct 13, 341, precinct 12, 356, precinct 5, 4,202, precinct 6, 3916, that's a little bit off to where even if you just divide the number in half between Republicans and Democrats, that's not really kind of equal representation. And so when we get way above 2,000, that kind of gets away from federal guidelines as to precinct sizes. And so I do want to look at that later. Now, when we look at the elections and what Donald Trump has basically stated yesterday, he states that he's going to lead a movement to get rid of mail-in ballots, which we really don't have in South Dakota, but other states like Minnesota do where they don't even allow people to vote in person. And but we have counties that are looking at that in South Dakota, and so we want to make sure that we're respecting the right of the individual to vote in person. That's the more secure way. Then he also talks about, while we're at it, highly inaccurate, very expensive, and seriously controversial voting machines, which cost 10 times more than accurate and sophisticated watermark paper, which is faster and leaves no doubt at the end of the evening as to who won and who lost. Then further down, he talks about using the voting machines that are a complete and total disaster must end now. And I have the evidence to basically back that up, and I have now filed six pieces to our State Board of Elections in South Dakota to actually start the discussions about the security of the machines. They first center on the four laptops that four of the counties use where the antivirus hadn't been updated in five years, and we're about to go into the 2026 election with that antivirus not being updated in seven years. Now you as a county, we know that your machines, they're getting their antivirus updates whenever McGaffey or Norton basically does those updates, plus you're getting the updates from Windows to basically make sure that your systems are secure. However, what we've done is we've allowed voting equipment into our counties throughout the United States that doesn't do that. We have a lazy partner in ESNS who does not do sufficient enough engineering change orders to provide analysis and to do those updates to secure our elections. And it's absolutely ridiculous that they're not doing it. Here we are as a county, looking at machine replacements for Windows 10 to go to Windows 11 because the end of support is October 14th of this year. We haven't done that for our laptops in those four counties. Now, when it comes to the tabulators that we use here in Brookings County, don't worry, ESNS doesn't even use that operating system anymore for their new systems. They've actually abandoned that operating system and have gone to a new one. And yet, here we are stuck at 6 dot 1 dot 1 dot 0, and ESNS hasn't even approached our State Board of Elections for 6 dot 2, 6 dot 3, 6 dot 4, or 6 dot 5. And don't worry, it wouldn't matter anyways because those four laptops aren't even on Windows 11 in those four new systems. Trump in his executive order on March 25th basically put the benchmark down into two areas. One, voter rolls, to basically audit those and make sure that illegals weren't voting in elections. They are prosecuting those across the United States right now. We have some states that are resisting sharing their voter rolls, like our neighboring state, Minnesota. It's pretty disgusting because he's the head of the National Association of Secretary of States. Bad leadership. Secondly, when it comes to the voting machines, he asked the EAC to recertify existing equipment if they would qualify under the higher security of VBSG 2.0. What's sick is that ESNS hasn't even submitted a new system or even submitted an existing system to be at the new standards. That in itself speaks volumes. That's why I'm recommending that we walk away and you have the authority to do so with the statute that I provided to you under 1217B-3 to try and get transparency back into our elections. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
The next would be Mondale Keck.
Testing. I'll keep this short and sweet, folks. I'm gonna hold up the news. The Brookings Register is back. We're in publication on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And if there's any comments or questions, I can maybe help enlighten you. So, yeah, we're back in business.
Two days a week, did you say?
Yes, Tuesdays and Thursdays will be the publication dates for the newspaper. Then we'll have online updates pretty much daily, Monday through Friday, and occasional weekends, stuff like that. So.
Subscription people that we're currently on will still stay on?
Yep, that's our understanding. Sean Sarvis, he's the, he's out of here. He's the publisher that's overseeing this. He says we're gonna do the best, you know, to make, make good on our subscribers and our advertisers. So they're not gonna be left behind. So.
Yeah, contact information still the same?
We'll be giving you email addresses, and as those come out, I can share them with, you know, Commissioners and stuff like that, and other personnel that need to know. And it'll be updated on our website as well. We're now owned by Champion Media. It's a North Carolina company. It's a family-owned company. 2530 Publications, they've got one up in North Dakota, one over in Minnesota, and stuff like that. So.
Tell the, your employer that thank you for coming forward. It's a valuable tool that the commission uses to relay our information. So.
Appreciate it. Any other questions or anything they can help with?
Good news.
Ah, thank you. Alright, well, let's get to official business.
Item number five on the agenda is consent agenda items. Includes amendments, travel requests, personnel action notices, cellular authorizations, human services report. Do I have motion approved?
Don't move.
Second.
I have motion of second. Any additions or corrections? Any comments? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Post.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number six is routine business, approval of the claims. Do I have motion approved of the claims?
Don't move.
Second.
I have motion of second. Any comments? Hearing none, call the roll.
Post.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next would be the, item B is department head reports. We'll start with Brian from the Highway Department.
Good morning.
Morning.
Well, as we're well into August here, now we're going to be kicking off the second part of our construction season. It seems like we've just finished up a few projects, and now we're kicking off a few more. Monday, August 11th, we held a pre-con meeting in White with the city of White being in attendance for our 2025 asphalt project that will be from Highway 30 or South Dakota Highway 30 to the North County line on 478th Avenue. Central Specialties is the contractor, which was awarded the contract earlier this year. September 2nd is the anticipated start date for the paving. They plan on three days. But in between then, which we don't have much time in between then, we'll be working with Central Specialties to mill up to the spots that were reconstructed with the city of White's water and sewer project. And that's to ensure that we're making sure their ADA compliant intersections will stay that way. We'll be milling up to them and then paving in between those spots. Overall, I think it'll end up being a good project through White. Working with them in the past, I wanted to ensure that all their dig-ups into our county road would be completed before we pave that, and that is done. So now the final piece of that will come and, and get that paved. Is there any questions on that? And just one more thing to mention, I did, I was in contact with the school district, the, the bus personnel, and I have been in communication to ensure that we don't have too much delays for the buses for those few days. But there again, they have been notified, and we'll be working with them to make sure that the kids get back and forth from school safely. Secondly, here's 08XO. I know I mentioned it at the last meeting, and then we added a bunch of rain that delayed the contractor approximately one week. They did close that road down on Friday, the 15th, and there was equipment on site yesterday, starting to dismantle the bridge. So that project is getting well underway. The big one here that I want to discuss with you guys is 16A. I was notified yesterday that the contractor is going to be planning on being here Wednesday. So what the plan will be is today we're working, the county crews are working on adding the final gravel. There was a couple areas out there by the Bennett Barn, and then there was one other resident that did some dust control. We're gonna be topping those areas with gravel. And then Wednesday or into Thursday, they'll be closed for that project, and the contractor will be in there milling that up and injecting the base stabilize mater, base stabilizer material. And then I also got into contact with our chip seal contractor who's scheduled to be there next week on Wednesday to perform the chip seal operation. So hopefully we have that road open completed by Labor Day. But we do plan on leaving it closed. We're trying to avoid any additional raveling to ensure that our chip seal adheres to that surface, and the, the final surface should be just, just about like a paved road, but won't have the strength say asphalt would.
You mentioned at the intersection mile west of Aurora that you were gonna do some work there.
Yeah, we're gonna, I don't think we'll be able to get it in between the chip seals, but I would like to pave that intersection at 475th Avenue and then the crossing there for LG Everest. I would like to reinforce with some asphalt to prevent breakups. This blotter that we plan to put down can get tender, and that's why we anticipate this asphalt, even a thin lift of two inch would, would help preserve those areas from breakup. But that can be done after the fact with the road open. Is there any questions on that? And I will be getting an advertisement out to Stacy and Michelle and Bob and get everybody notified that we'll be expecting about a week-long closure on that.
With that, is there, and maybe you said it, is there some dust control and stuff with whatever, everything that we're doing to 16A?
16A will be a final product of a chip sealed surface, which will basically eliminate any and all dust.
Good.
And then later on down the road here, once we do get our fog sealing done, I intend to get the striping done after we complete our, our chip sealed roads with fog seal, and then they can come in and, and stripe it. So there won't be stripes on it right away, but we'll be marking that. Um, I guess one other thing we had happen at the shop, and I know I'd worked with other departments, is our gas pump at the shop was down August 7th. They discovered a leak, and I notified all the departments at that time that we'd have a temporary closure of that. Last Thursday, they were back on site, and they temporarily had it working over the weekend, and then the permanent fix was completed yesterday. So just so all the department heads know that our gas pump is now back and functional and shouldn't, shouldn't have any more delays on that. That's what I got. Last week, I was in peer at the Highway Superintendent's Certification and, and Office Personnel Workshop. So I was out a bit last week, but I think I've got everything covered. I didn't have anybody go to the meeting, Kelly, but I don't know if much came out of that.
I was going as well, but you're planning on going tomorrow?
Yeah.
Good. Thank you.
Any other questions, Brian?
Thank you.
Marty from the Sheriff's Office.
Good morning.
Good morning, Marty.
Busy time. I don't know where the summer went, but it's gone, gone with school starting. But we'll still have some nice days yet, I think. So anyway, at the present time, we have 58 inmates. We've been staying around in that high 50s to 61, 62 for the last month or so. We have 28 that are actually Brookings County inmates, either have been sentenced or waiting to, for trial. There's just five from other counties other than the US Marshal Service is that. The US Marshal Service, just a reminder, I, I do have a contract for 10, but I do have 22, and I do have the room. As long as I have the room, I'll, I'll take the Marshal Service inmates. They don't cause a lot of issues for me, or for the jail, I should say. So 24/7 continues to stay busy. There's 55 that come in twice a day for a breath test. So that's 110 people that come in. So that, that area always stays, stays busy. I got a lot of staff changes at the Sheriff's Office. My front office is gonna be pretty much changed. Matt Christensen, who was the office manager, he's, he, I'm gonna move him into a deputy position. And, and then Jimmy Gay, who's been working as the office coordinator, he's gonna move into that position. And then Andrew Foreman, who was back in the jail, is gonna move into Jimmy. So there's lots of changes. So you have to bear with me on some of my, Kelly brought up a couple things in my report that nobody caught. So, but anyway, thank you. At least I, like I told you, at least I know you read it. So thank you. Anyway, so lots of changes. My intentions this fall is I get deputies in places to bring them over and introduce. So you see their faces and so forth. So with school starting, we'll be going back into Elkton and Volga once a month, every other month for breakfast with the lower grades. The kids seem to like that. And my staff, I try to make some of them. I don't make all of them, but we hand out badges and different things. And so that's enjoyable for the kids and for my deputies, too. And then when we're in Elkton, sometimes the sheriff in Lincoln County sneaks over, too, because a lot of, there's a few kids that are from Lincoln County that go to school in Elkton. Deputy Creasy was at a, was at the Volga meeting for, for, for the road construction and stuff. Big, big, I think he said they spent most of the time talking about barricades, how they're gonna barricade and that type of stuff. So anyway, he said that a lot of time was spent on that. Last Wednesday, I was invited by, by the new jackrabbit coach to come up and talk to the football team, which, which is exciting. I felt small in there, which was kind of exciting for me. Anyway, there's some big boys. I'd like to have them in a bar fight or something in my patrol days. Anyway, good group, good kids. They're fired up, ready for a big season. So that was, that was fun. Tomorrow night, I think this is the third, third or fourth time we've been invited to grassroots north of town for multicultural. A lot of the students from other countries come, ice cream social, and we have different vendors are there. The police department's there, university police, and then a lot of these, a lot of different businesses and so forth are, are there. And, and that's, that's a fun time. They like to, they like to take pictures with the sheriff. So I will be there. So a few pictures could be taken. My guys, my deputies attended a, a training yesterday with the state's attorney's office. They had two sessions yesterday, and then I'll be attending. There's a session on Thursday that, that I will, and the rest of my staff will. And I think what the idea was, and maybe Dan will talk about it, too, is this, so we're all kind of on the same page, right? All the agencies and, and talk about some things. And so that's, I think that was good. So anyway, other than that, if you have any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Bob from County Development.
Good morning.
Good morning, Bob.
The Madera Township update, the landowner has been contacted. We sent him a letter that was drafted by Banner's associate to see if he's willing to sign it. Basically, the letter is just explaining the process that we're at now and that we need his permission to go on. On the same avenue, next month, at the next meeting, we will have a contract from Banner for the, for you guys to take a look at and approve the ongoing costs in that project. Next meeting, we have our local emergency management planning grant has been sent to us for the fiscal year 2026, which starts one October. That'll be brought to you next month for your signature. Also, on late last week, that we received a correspondence from Department of Public Safety, Office of Emergency Management. And basically, it's, they call it L-E-M-P-G Section 25 Task Sheets. And basically what it is, it breaks down what, what we're required to do on a yearly basis. And of course, we still got another quarter to go. So if, if you see a no somewhere, it's because we typically do it on, at the, in the fourth quarter. And other than that, that's all I have right now. Anybody have any questions?
Bob, I was wondering with the high water right now, if it'd be possible to get a flow measurement down there at the diversion area, at the, at the two bridge sites?
I could request it through East Dakota.
And.
Part of the development district.
And maybe get an aerial of that. I know things are changing down there.
Okay, I'll see what I can do for you, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
It's cool. Both of them are very cool.
And it would be a good, good time to get the additional photographs and, and, okay, thank you.
Just a sec. Marty, do you have?
Do you want, do you want some drone pictures?
Misty from Weed.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I handed you out some handouts. One is for your information. The other one I just want to take a look at is the chemical we've purchased this year so far in 2025. Just want to explain, we did not budget for cattail spraying. So, and you see there, you can see the Aquanet and the LI 700. We've bought in multiple gallons, 10, 25, 30 gallons of Aquanet. We have a lot of cattails in Brookings County with it being so wet this year. And we're only spraying the cattails on county roads. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. I also want to let you know that the mosquito chemical that was purchased, the Burkets, and then the 55 gallon drum for mosquito fogging, that is coming out of the chemical line. We do have a mosquito line, but we didn't budget any money in there either for this year. So I just wanted to let you know that there's an awfully big bill coming because of the Aquanet mosquito Burkets and the fogging of the chemical. Now, the Burkets are what we put on county roads in standing bodies of water to make it so the mosquito doesn't get wings and fly out.
Okay.
Real quick, we have nine roads left on the cattail spraying. We really got to work with the wind again on that. It's two people in a truck, and one person drives, one person sprays the cattails. And generally, we like a wind that's going away from the vehicle so we can get the chemical on the cattails out there. I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Overall budget, though, just, it, it looks all right except for the chemical line. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions, Misty?
Misty, on the Aquanet, you've got 717, 815, and then 91525. So that 915 hasn't happened yet?
It's, it's due.
Oh, okay.
I haven't paid them to out yet.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Still waiting on a, on a statement for them, too. But otherwise, the rest is all paid for. Yes.
Are we doing mosquitoes in all standing water on county roads or just populated areas?
I'll, as wherever there's standing water on county roads, any standing water, we put Burkets down. I, I, it's not a cure-all, but it does help.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Misty.
Thank you.
Lori with Finance.
Um, I just, the only thing I wanna say is, um, we're glad the register is going to continue. It's a very important part, um, to get our information from county government out to the citizens, so we do appreciate the register and we also appreciate the work you've done, Mondell. Otherwise, no.
Okay, thank you. Under the Finance Office Report, uh, we do have some action items. Action to approve third quarter general fund transfer as per budget appropriations. Do I have motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have motion second. Any comments?
I have a question, Stacy, on, um, I don't know if it's in this part of it, but on page seventy-seven of the agenda, or of the packet, where expenditure adjustments for the month of July, eighty, eight thousand three hundred fifty-one dollars transferred to allocate to the Highway Department. Can you explain what that is?
So, I, I'm sorry, where are you, what part of the packet are you looking at?
Page seventy-seven. Be it noted.
Oh, this is what we're doing, that would be for gas usage from other, other, other offices in the county? Oh, yeah, this is part of Lori's.
That's transferred into the highway.
Okay.
So, the Highway Department does work for other departments, or, um, like the gas that's used, other departments fill up vehicles out at the Highway Department. They keep track of those expenses each month and then send basically that report to the Finance Office. The Finance Office does some budget, budget adjustments to, um, take those expenses instead of out of Highway, out of the actual departments that actually use the gas, or if the Highway has, you know, something, a vehicle that they fix for equalization, let's say, then equalization has some additional costs. So, it's, um, we do it every month. It's the, just the Highway adjustments, basically, so, yeah.
Good, thank you. Thank you, Lori.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign, motion carried. Third quarter transfers documents, uh, from General Fund one oh one, dash four, dash nine one one, dash four two.
That's what we, that's what we just did.
Okay.
That's all one thing, yeah.
Okay, be it noted items, uh, orders account with the treasure, payroll and additive totals, Highway Expenditure Report, and a Register of Deeds Statement of Fees Collected. Those are be it noted items. Uh, we do have a nine, uh, we do not have a nine o'clock. We can move on to, uh, regular business. Action approved resolution number twenty-five dash forty-three, a plat of Block eleven, Berklin Edition, located in a portion of Government Lot Two, in the southeast quarter of Section twenty-nine, Township one oh nine north, range fifty west of the Fifth Primoridian, all in Brookings County, South Dakota. Do I have motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have motion second. Comments?
This was heard August the fifth, under a regularly scheduled Brookings County Planning and His Only Meeting, approved unanimously and sent to this board with a recommendation that you approve it.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, call roll, please.
Miller?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B is action approved resolution number twenty-five dash forty-four, a plat of Fuller Edition in Government Lot Two, Section fifteen, Township one oh nine north, range forty-seven west of the Fifth Primoridian, Brookings County, South Dakota. Do I have motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion second, comments?
Once again, we heard this August the fifth, approved unanimously by the Brookings County Planning and His Only Board and sent to this board with a recommendation that you approve it.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Hearing none, call roll.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item C is an action to approve resolution number twenty-five dash forty-five, a plat of Block one of Roland Hutterian, Brethren Cemetery Edition in the southeast quarter of Section nine, Township one ten north, range forty-eight west of the Fifth Primoridian, Brookings County, South Dakota. Do I motion approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have motion second. Comments?
This one was also approved August the fifth and sent to this board, and the reason behind this one is the, the cemetery has been in place for, for years, and the actual location that was, was planted was wrong, so they wanted to correct and make sure that the cemetery was in the correct location. So it was passed unanimously and sent to this board with a recommendation you approve it.
Okay, any questions or comments? Hearing none, call roll, please.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item D is an action approved agreement number twenty-five dash sixty-six, an amendment number two to the state agreement number seven one seven five six nine for Project PCN O eight F three, structure number zero six two two seven dash two three zero. Do I have motion approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have motion second. Comments?
Although this work has been completed, uh, in the past, these regularly take anywhere from six to eight months to close out. So if we forecast six to eight months out from now, you can see that the, uh, agreement originally was to be completed and, and closed out by February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-six, so we need to amend this to make sure that we get our fifty percent reimbursement from the DOT.
Any other question or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign, motion carried. Item E is action approved agreement number twenty-five dash sixty-seven, an application for occupancy of the right of county highway made by Sioux Valley Energy and Sherman Township. Do I motion approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have motion second. Any comments?
It's going from overhead to underground, uh, servicing a resident or farm place, residence.
Okay, any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign, motion carried. Item F, action approved request to fill vacancy for an office coordinator in the Sheriff's Office. Do I have motion approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have motion second. Any comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign, motion carried. Item G is action approved request to fill vacancy for Corrections Corporal in the Sheriff's Office. Do I have motion approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have motion second. Any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign, motion carried. Item H, action approved request to fill vacancy for a deputy sheriff in the Sheriff's Office. Do I have motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Have motion second. Any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign, motion carried. Item I, action approved request to fill vacancy for a sign technician in the Highway Department. Do I have motion approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have motion second. Any further comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign, motion carried. Item number nine on the agenda, Commission Department Director's Report.
The Veteran Service Officer Report. It was included with my report. Um, no DAV van rides, but six rides with the Veterans Transportation Service. They had four events, and then payments in July were, were great. Um, uh, one hundred thirty-three thousand six hundred about, so that report is there being shown. So that is great. They're doing a good job there. Um, the twenty twenty-six provisional budget is included with my report here for you to take a look at. Um, this represents a true balanced budget. Revenues equal expenditures in all funds, except for the Register of Deeds Relief Fund. We are using, um, or planning to use a little bit of cash there. Um, that's, it's, that's not, that, that doesn't surprise me that that fund is very specific for its use, and so the cash is there, so just using some addition, some of that cash. They have some very specific uses for that fund, so. Otherwise, um, it is balanced. We will be holding the provisional budget public hearing at the, our next meeting. Our first meeting in September is when we have to legally do that, so it will be officially, um, approved at that point. Then we, we, we wait. There more than likely will be some changes between the provisional and the annual budget. The annual budget will get, um, approved at the second meeting that we have in September, but, uh, just wanted to kinda get your eyes on this now, so you have a chance to, to look at it. It's probably been a little bit since you've seen that document. Uh, the general fund surplus for July was at thirty-three percent. That is, uh, the ten-year average is thirty-two percent, so we're, we're kind of right on track, right on track there. Um, we've received some information from the Public Utilities Commission regarding an application by Western Minnesota Municipal Power, um, and Missouri River Energy Services for a facility permit. It's an energy conversion facility, um, and associated facilities, including an, an electric, electric transmission line. This is all up in Dual County. Um, but because we're neighboring counties, we are receiving these notices. Um, I will be adding to the packet a couple other notices that we've received on that since the packet closed last week. One of those being, um, Wednesday, September twenty-fourth at five thirty, there will be a meeting. Um, the PUC is going to be hosting that public input meeting, um, for folks to provide information, feedback. That's going to be in Toronto at the Dubrook Elementary School Gym, so I'll get that on your, your notices as well. Um, we have some other invitations that you have received. Um, let me see if I can find them here. Oh, well, first, let's do this. The Proposed Resolution and Policy Statement Revision. So we have, um, in September, we'll be going out to Pier for the SDACC, SDACO Annual Convention. Um, part of that is, uh, the board during the general session will vote on resolutions and changes to policy statements. There was only one resolution that was submitted this year by the Southeast District. Um, and you can see it there. This is actually part of my report, too, so you can take a look at it. It was probably emailed out to you by Chris as well, but, um, a resolution supporting request for revision of real estate transfer fees in the state of South Dakota. And you can read that there. What will happen, we will have, um, kind of an initial caucus with our Sioux Valley Commissioners Group, um, on the first, it's like kind of the end of the day on that Monday. We usually hear from someone from that Southeast District that kind of explains what this is, um, comes in and talks to us. Uh, we can visit about that then as a, as a group as well. And then on Tuesday, at the business meeting, we vote on it. We only do get one vote per county, so you will need to kind of discuss amongst yourselves, um, how you feel about that resolution, and then come up with a determination on how to vote. There's also a number of proposed revisions to the policy statements this year, and again, this is in my packet, so you can kinda take a look at those. But it's just, a lot of it's just kinda clarifying language on a lot of these things, and then there's some additional policy statements that were added here in red, um, a number of them having to do with, um, Veteran Service Officers. I actually had, um, Matt, our VSO, take a look at those, and he was very impressed and was happy with those changes, so, um, uh, but there are some other ones there, so go ahead and take a look at those. Those will be voted on as well at convention. Then you did receive some other invitations that will all get put out on the public notices as well. The South Dakota Energy Summit on the twenty-first. This conflicts with the Conservation Tour that we have coming up on Thursday, but I wanted you to be aware of it. Then there's this Revive twenty thirty. Um, it's again Thursday, this Thursday, August twenty-first, but it's in, in the evening, six to eight thirty PM down in Colton. Um, this is all in my report, so if you want to RSVP, well, I think I sent this out already 'cause the RSVP was needed already. That's down in Colton. And then the last thing coming up in October, um, is this information from First Bank and Trust, this, uh, um, fueling innovation through turbulent times. And there is a session on October twenty-third in Brookings up at Club Seventy-One at the football, SDSU Football, um, Center, or Football Stadium, rather, and, um, there's a QR code there to RSVP, and that's kinda what that, uh, what that all entails for the day. Um, the other thing that I had, we had a, uh, Regional Economic Development Meeting, um, kind of a gathering last, last week, and, um, the mayor of Aurora, Josh Jones, stopped me afterwards and, and wanted us to kinda start the discussion of having a crosswalk across Broadway, which is County Road twenty-three, and that main highway, north-south highway through Aurora. There are kids that have to cross that road, um, to get to, I think, bus, bus stops and whatnot. So, um, I told him that I would bring that up with you folks, as it is a county road. Um, and so maybe I can visit with Brian about that a little bit more, too, and just exactly what that would look like and what, what it takes to, to do that, um, over there in the city of Aurora, so. Other than that, some upcoming, the upcoming dates, um, that were part of my, part of my report, go back there, make it so you can actually maybe read it. Um, just a reminder, we do have that Conservation District Tour on Thursday, um, at, from, it's at, we meet at eight at the Conservation, uh, District at their, um, facilities just north of town. Uh, we meet at eight, the bus will leave. We have a beta bus that will take us around that leaves about quarter after eight, so you wanna make sure you're there on time to get on the bus. And then there's a lunch, um, they get us back by about noon, and then they have lunch there at the shop before you head out. Then there was the other couple of meetings that I had already mentioned on Thursday. Uh, September first is Labor Day this year, and offices will be closed. The next day after that is our first September meeting and is the provisional budget, um, public hearing at that point. Um, the seventh through the ninth, we will be, a lot of us will be heading out to Pier to, um, the Fall Convention, as I've already mentioned. September twenty-third, Tuesday, it's, we do have another joint meeting with the Brookings City Council here in the chambers at five thirty. And then looking out a little ways into October, we have Hobo Day with the parade and the events that day. Uh, we'll be closed for Native American Day on October thirteenth, and then I had mentioned the First Bank and Trust, um, event on October twenty-third. And then, um, make sure that you have October twenty-eighth marked off on your calendars for the exec session for department head reviews. Um, we'll start that at eight thirty. Uh, one other thing, too, to kinda get on your radar, on September twenty-fifth is the First District Picnic and Events, and I think we'll be getting an invitation and some additional information out on that soon. Um, but that is September twenty-fifth. I think that's all I have, unless you have questions for me.
Any que, any questions, Stacy? Hearing none, I'll move on to, um, State's Attorney's Office Report.
Yeah, as Marty was saying, um, Austin, the Deputy State's Attorney, put on a training for all the law enforcement agencies, uh, here in Brookings County, so we had, uh, members from the Sheriff's Office, Brookings Police Department, uh, University Police Department, um, and it was really just a, kind of a refresher course to go off, uh, that kinda went into some of the courtroom topics that some of the newer officers should be expected to know. Um, and so it was something that we haven't done in the past, but there was sort of a need for it, just because, you know, some of the newer officers coming on board with all the different agencies that we work with. Um, so Austin had two sessions, um, on, yeah, yesterday, and then as Marty said, there's another one on Thursday. So, well received, you know, it's always good to get everyone on the same page and kinda set the expectations going into, uh, anytime there's gonna be in-court testimony for the officers, so something that, uh, we plan to continue to do periodically into the future, so.
Thank you. On Tuesday, August 5th, I attended the Volga National Night Out over in Volga. Great job by the Sheriff's Department and others that put that together. It's great to see. On Wednesday, August 6th, at 1:00 in the afternoon, I attended the Samara Avenue 464th Weekly Meeting. And then last Wednesday, the August 13th, I attended the county, the 10-county meeting in Clark. Great presentations by the Willow Lake FFA chapter there, and, yeah, we got to drive home in the rain that day, so, thank you.
Commissioner Post.
Yeah, on August 7th, I attended the pipeline meeting that we held here in this building. It was a good meeting, I think we've come to some pretty good conclusions of where we need to be, and should be wrapping up shortly.
Commissioner Miller.
Right, on the 5th, oh, thank you. On the 5th, I also attended the Volga Night Out. Good event, Marty, thank you and your crew for putting that together, well-attended. On the 13th, the 10-county meeting in Clark. And on the 14th, the meeting for the Brookings Economic Development Corporation, and that was fascinating with all the information that was shared there with the different local communities. That's my report.
Okay, Commissioner Hostler.
Yeah, on the 11th, as people may know, I'm a part of the Board for the newly organized Economic Development Committee, but I'm on the board, we had that first meeting there, and we're going to be meeting every two weeks for the next few months to hopefully get that seated and, and get that new organization up and running for hopefully the first of the year. And then on the 13th, we had a Joint Powers Board meeting here, and then traveled to Clark for that 10-county meeting. On the 14th, we had our BDC Regional Stakeholder Meeting over in 300, which was very well-attended. I think they got some good ideas about kind of what is needed in our, in our region for some development, economic development, housing and things like that. And then I had to cut out early that meeting and go to our Research Park at SDSU Board Meeting, and, and that is my report.
Thank you. On, after our meeting on the 5th, did go out to the, the Beta Building, recently purchased with different department heads, and we kind of went through there with the space needs of each department, and I think we come to a general consensus of some of the needs and locations out there for each department. Also, on the 5th, the National Night Out, did attend that over in Volga, it was a good event, took grandkids and had a lot of fun over there. On the 6th, Conservation District Meeting in the morning, attended the Samara Avenue Progress Meeting at 1:00. And then on the 7th, did attend the CDI event out at the Country Club, and Team Stephenson and myself had a good outing that day. We were successful in that outing. On the 13th, attended the Community Roundtable, out at the Research Park that morning, basically had an update from representative from SDSU on what's going on on campus and basically enrollment trends and housing issues and a lot of different things going on on campus. It was very interesting. Also, went out to the 10-county meeting, had a presentation from the Willow Lake FFA Chapter out there. They did a presentation on parliamentary procedure, it was, they were really good, I thought, and I guess they move on to, I think they went to Nationals last year, whatever, but they're, they're preparing to do that again. It was a, a good meeting. On the 14th, I also attended the Regional Stakeholders Meeting here at our facility. A lot of talk on the small towns trying to develop on the outskirts of their town and annex in some properties, and also within the county, the 35-acre rule is discussed. It was a good meeting and well-attended. With that, that's all I have. We move on to item number 12, Executive Session in accordance with South Dakota Codified Law 1-25-2, parentheses 1, parentheses 3. Do I have motion to enter Executive Session?
Still moved.
Second.
Have motion second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, we're in Executive Session.